It's fine, it's peaceful, it's not over the top.
Good evening, I'd like to call the General Committee meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance? Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening with heavy hearts in our grief over the loss of one of our school board family. We ask a special blessing upon the family of Ron Nikosia, Father, and at the same time, we celebrate his life of service to his community, and specifically to the children of St. Bernard Parish. We are grateful for the positive impact he has had upon public education in our parish, and as we conduct our business this evening, Father, we pray that we will do with the same level of integrity and passion for this community as was displayed by him during his tenure on this board. For these things, we pray in your name. Amen.
Mr. England, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visual and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Votche.
Mrs. Acevedo.
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Dr. Kraft.
Here.
Mr. Egan.
Here.
Mrs. Lamoyne.
Here.
Mr. England.
Here.
Mrs. Daisart.
Here.
Dr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Long is not with us, and Mr. Warner.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Votche. At this time, we will take a moment of silence for Mr. Ron Nikosia, our friend and board member. Thank you. Tonight, just a few words. Tonight, we mourn the loss of our dear friend and fellow board member, Ron Nikosia. It is with very heavy hearts that we extend our deepest sympathy, condolences, and prayers to Ron's wife, Judy, his children, Perry, Angel, Nicole, his grandchildren, and the entire Nikosia family. Ron Nikosia was a great man. He was a leader and a citizen of his beloved parish, St. Bernard. He was an outstanding person in every way. Ron was a wonderful husband for over fifty years to his beautiful wife, Judy, a fantastic father to his children, and a proud and wonderful grandfather. He cherished his family greatly. Ron served on our board for many years, and was a tremendous, hands-on, and very involved board member. He loved visiting our schools, and always put the children first in all that he did. He was well-respected by our school board members, administration, faculties, staff, students, and our entire school community. He served as a school board member with distinction and honor. During his tenure on the school board, great strides and accomplishments were achieved. We will all sorely miss Ron Nikosia, and we will miss him as part of this board. Ron will be remembered for many things, but I think personally, I'll miss him for his friendship, his hearty laugh, and his warm smile. Again, we express our deepest sorrow to Ron's family and for their irreplaceable loss. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, next, first item on the agenda are committee assignments. In your folder, you will see the committee assignments from last year, and by next meeting, if you would review these, and then see if you want to, if you'd like to change your chairmanship, and just let me know, and we can accommodate you in that way, okay? So just let me know if you'd like to change committees. Okay, next item on the agenda is an update on the MoMA Center Planetarium program. This is an education committee item.
Thank you, Ms. Daisart.
Good evening.
Hi, welcome. I'm so glad to be here with you. We started having students at the MoMA's on February 1st, but I want to tell you how the process came about. What I did was I took the guide to statewide assessment for every grade level, and I went through it to see what concepts that were being taught that we could address either in the planetarium or in one of our Full Dome video shows. So I then took and correlated those to all of the GLEs and the Next Generation Science standards, and prepared a lesson. And then from that lesson, I went into the planetarium and built the show. I took the textbooks, and I read every student's science textbook to make sure that I was speaking the correct terminology and at the level for each grade level. I'm a middle school teacher, so I'm used to teaching middle school, so I didn't want to be too over their head or too below their level. Each lesson is grade-specific, and even though two grades may be talking about the solar system or the planets, they're not the same lesson that they get delivered when they come to the planetarium, because they learn a little bit, they build every year on it. So I've written the lessons where they all build. There's a pre-phase part to the lesson, and that's what they do at school, and it usually includes vocabulary, some kind of terminology that we'll be using in the presentation, then an activity that they do at school before they come. It could be an actual hands-on activity, or some kind of reading or research they do. Second phase is when they come to me at the planetarium, they see a little pre-show, and then they come into the planetarium, and you start to hear the oohs and the ahs the minute they walk in. They are just blown away by it. Anything that occurs in there right now that they're seeing and doing is either a review of something they've learned in class, or it's what they're currently learning, and it's working so well, it's going hand in hand. And while I'm doing the presentation, it's a live presentation, I'm showing them things on the screen, and I'm talking the entire time. We stop, we have questions, they answer my questions. When I go to switch from one area to the next, they ask me questions about things they're unsure about, but it's been so amazing to see how much our students know, and how much they can identify, and they get amazed because they can see the pictures in the textbook, but to actually see an eclipse occurring on the Full Dome with an actual eclipse, not just animated, but it's actually happening, has them amazed. When they finish with me, and let me just tell about the Full Dome videos. The Full Dome videos, 5th grade saw a technology video, and it was all about how the telescope has advanced from its inception till now, and it meets several of the standards, Next Generation standards and GLEs that they have to meet. And really great content, it has a study guide that goes with it for the teacher at school to use with them. 4th graders are in there now, and we're doing, not, we're doing space with me talking, but we're doing a life science lesson when they watch the Full Dome video, Life of Trees. They study photosynthesis, they study the parts of the plant, so it's reinforcing what they have learned. And that has a study guide, or a teacher's guide, that the teachers got in advance, and they were able to review things with the students before they came. The post, or the last phase, is back at school, and I have developed in the lessons, the teachers have to develop nothing, they get everything. If it's a worksheet, they get it. For Phase 3, if it's an exit ticket, I've made it for them, they have the exit ticket. It may be another little activity to wrap up something, it's all made for them, they just have to click on it, and it opens up for them. And some of the teachers requested an extension activity, because they wanted to take it a step further, so I've built an extension activities for it also. We saw every 5th grader in four days. We actually had 522 students pass through in those four days. We started 4th grade yesterday, and between yesterday and today, we had 227 4th graders. So we have actually had 793 either students or teachers and faculty that have come through the MoMA Center. Nothing negative has been said, it's all been positive. The kids are amazing. I want my birthday party here, can I have my birthday party here? Can we come every week? When's the next time we get to come? And then they walk out and see the stars on the wall, and then they want to stop and just spend more time there. So they're away from school for about two and a half hours, but it is packed the entire time, they stay busy, they stay focused, behaviors have been wonderful, they, and I'm telling you, when you, when they first, when I first start showing things, it's, wow, oh, and the teachers are trying to keep them quiet, but I'm like, no, I understand, they're excited, let them get over their excitement, but it has been amazing.
Thank you, Ms. Acevedo, and thank you for everything you do. I know you are a very awesome teacher, and so to have you running the MoMA's Center and the Planetarium, and touching the lives that you're touching, it's great. So I thank you for what you do as well, we really appreciate it. Any board members? Yes, Ms. Lamoyne?
Again, thank you so much. I was so honored to get to come the first day and watch the students as they got off the bus, and came and did the whole experience. So I think what's so exceptional about what you've done is that not only are the lessons incredible and jam-packed with great content, but the way that you facilitated the entire experience for the students from getting off the bus, and touring them around the building, and getting them back on the bus, you can tell how much you love your job, and how passionate you are for the content. So thank you so much for going above and beyond.
Ms. Votche.
Okay. And I just want to say, you know, when we decided to open this, and we advertised, and who was going to be the director over at the MoMA Center, I don't know, Ms. Acevedo has done just an incredible job. I don't know if you know, in her prior life, she was an actual nurse with a tremendous science background, and then came into teaching our middle school students, and was an incredible teacher, and still is. And what she has done to prepare these experiences for the students has been phenomenal. So it's not, let's just go to the planetarium and see a show, it's a full experience that is integrated in our science curriculum, so it is meaningful. The teachers, on the other hand, have the materials that they need prepared by Ms. Acevedo, who do the, you know, the preparation prior to the students coming in, which even enriches and enhances the experience they have while they're there, and then there's a follow-up. So it's truly being used in an educational capacity, and not just sometimes, you know, when you go to a museum, or you go to a show at the IMAX, or you go somewhere, it's really nice, but, you know, you walk through, and it really doesn't correlate with what the kids might be doing that day, or that week, or studying. So just kudos, you know, when we did the interviews, a lot of people were interested in being over at the MoMA Center, but we were very interested in choosing the right person who was going to be able to make that science curriculum come alive. And I just have to say kudos to Ms. Acevedo, who has done an incredible job, and I know will continue to. She puts many, many hours in to making this a meaningful and wonderful experience for our teachers, so I just wanted to publicly recognize that.
I did want to say one thing. One of our 5th grade teachers had her kids taking notes while they were there, and then they went back to school and wrote an essay about what they learned, and she made copies of those essays, and gave them to me, and I've just started reading through them, and it is amazing what they have remembered from just that little 25 minutes with me in there, and were able to document for me. I'm gonna pass some of those along to you as I finish reading, because they are amazing.
Dr. Kraft?
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Yes, we got a tremendous team there, and of course, other school districts turn free, but if it can be, when we look at what we got, so we're really, really fortunate to have this in our school district, and for the students, for the community. Hopefully, that we, at some point, get a great course in astronomy for the high school students, that it would be a lift up. So, and also, I like the fact that...
I like the fact that we now have it grade level-friendly, and it's not above or too low for the students, and that's tremendous, so we want to commend you on this. And of course, when we think of all the space out there, and what this space entails, like we just heard something that collided a billion light-years ago, and we're just now finding out about it. So it's tremendous and exciting to think about this, and we can bring a lot of this to pass, and help the students understand. So the world's our stage, the universe is our stage now, so we certainly appreciate where we started here, and where we'll end up, for the students' benefit. Thank you very much.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, Gina. Ms. Acevedo. I've talked to her. But, you know, we can have all the buildings and nice things, but without the enthusiasm that you demonstrate, it carries over, and it's contagious for the students, and I appreciate you, even we felt your enthusiasm here, and that's more important than any building or program, because when those students see that, they're gonna want to learn, and I appreciate that. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Ms. Daisart?
Ms. Acevedo, I just want to also say thank you for going full force ahead, we're getting our students in the planetarium, and to use the MoMA Center, it's an awesome facility, and the fact that you wrote the curriculum for each grade level for the teachers and the students is a wonderful thing, and you've just made it complete. So thank you for all of your hard work, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very exciting.
Thank you. Any other board members? Ms. Votche?
Could you just explain how we're gonna go through the different grade levels and the sequence in one?
Okay. We decided that we wanted to get the grade levels in that were going to be tested, statewide testing first, so we could do a review of the solar system space, whatever I could do with that, and life science skills. So we started with elementary. Ms. Halton was a great help, we, she helped me schedule 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade. By the end of, by the March 1st, 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade will be finished. They will have been through the planetarium, through the MoMA Center. We go then to middle schools, and I met, Mary Lamont and I met with each principal at the middle school, and we planned out for them, so that all the middle schools will be finished by the end of March, and actually before we actually go on break. And even though, you know, the planetarium is mostly space-related, we do have a program that's gonna allow me to go ahead and work with 6th and 7th grade who don't have space in their curriculum. So there are things that I can do, and lessons I've written for them, that will address things that will be tested on, to review with them. And then we are in the process now of working on high school, to get high school scheduled in, some of the high school classes in, to see MoMA's. And then, once we get those grade levels in, then we're gonna go down to kindergarten, 1st, and 2nd grade, and we're gonna try to get pre-K 4 in, to see if we can get them in too. Because we, there is a couple of programs that I can do with, even the low-level ones.
And we're gonna do those toward the end of the semester while the other kids are taking statewide assessments, and so that's why we left the pre-K through 2nd grade until that may, you know, the last...
So hopefully, by the end of the school year, the majority of our students will have been at least once to the MoMA Center.
Very good. Any other board members? Thank you again, Ms. Acevedo, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6 in the Executive Committee item, Mr. England?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Lewis.
This item number 6, this is a review of performance contracts. You've got Mr. Granberry, I think this is for informational purposes only?
Yes, sir.
Because Act 1?
I think you have a write-up on each person up for renewal. Once again, informational purposes only.
So these are 26 of our school-based, primarily school-based, and some centrally-based administrators whose performance contracts will be renewed on July 1st for a two-year period.
Any questions, board members? Mr. Warner?
Yes, sir. Number 12. Do we really have to renew that guy again?
It would be nice to not renew that person, but that person's getting kinda old, you know?
No, he's doing a great job. He's doing a fabulous job.
I don't know if his wife would want him home on a regular basis, though, you know what I mean? It's one of those things.
Thank you, Mr. Granberry.
Very good, Mr. Warner.
If you make it as a motion, I'm...
Ms. Daisart?
Thank you, Mr. England. Mr. Granberry, we're very pleased you're still with us, and thank you for your long tenure. And just to say that all 26 of these administrators were very fortunate and blessed to have, they, the majority, I mean, all of them have been long-tenured with us, and have been very dedicated, so just want to thank them for their continued service. Thank you.
Well, we do have a good crew of administrators, you know, and it's, I guess you could thank the superintendent for that, because she appoints, you know?
Well, I tell you, without these people, nothing would get done in our school system, to be perfectly honest. They're the ones that day in and day out make it happen, good things happen for kids. So we're very, very blessed to have these people with us.
Yes, they are the backbone of our St. Bernard Parish school system.
So without doubt about it, you know? With the exception of number 12.
Thank you, Mr. Granberry.
All right.
We'll go on to item number 7, this personal changes for February 2016.
And once again, that's for informational purposes.
Any questions, board members? Ms. Daisart?
Our retiree, Sandra Bone, just want to thank her for her many, many years of service. She was, I know she's been with us for...
A long time.
A long time. And she's done a great job, and we thank her for her dedication.
You see, her retirement date is not till July 30th, because she wants to stay through summer school.
Oh, good.
She's been an extremely dedicated employee over all of these years, and is just wonderful with children, and has done a service, and we used to have the old graphic arts and such, and then...
Whenever we needed her, she was glad to go.
So she's done everything that she could for us in many different capacities with the school system, and she's a very good person.
Any questions for board members? Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Granberry.
Have a good evening.
We'll go on to item number 8, and up to you, Ms. Lamoyne.
Okay, agenda item number 8 is the permission to advertise for bids for bread and bread products for the period of July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017, for the St. Bernard Parish School Board. Can we have Ms. Bloom with us?
Good evening. This is an advertisement attached to the request for next year's bread and bread products bid for our school system.
Okay, we've got a motion made by Mr. Warner, seconded by Dr. Lewis. Anyone have any questions, comments? Okay, if not, please vote your machines.
Motion passes. Mr. Warner? Motion passes 9-0.
Okay, agenda item 9 is permission to advertise for bids for milk and milk products for the period of July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017, for the St. Bernard Parish School Board.
This is also a year bid for next school year, and we'll be advertising in March and opening the bids in April.
Got a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. Campbell. Any questions or comments? Right, now, vote your machines.
Motion passes 9-0.
Okay, and agenda item 10, a request for permission to advertise for bids for food products for the period of July 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2016, for the St. Bernard Parish School Board.
This is a six-month bid for our food, normally, and the first six months of school, we are advertising for bids.
Got a motion then by Mr. Warner, seconded by Ms. Daisart. Any questions or comments from Ms. Bloom? Right, now, vote your machines.
Motion passes 9-0.
And before you go, Ms. Bloom, I'd like to take a point of privilege, and thank you for inviting us all, for the legislative shadowing. It was such a pleasure to go to Arabi Elementary and work in the cafeteria. I know a few of us went to go work, so I'd like to thank you for setting that up, and Chad Hudson, and say a special thanks to Jill at Arabi Elementary for welcoming me in.
Oh, you're welcome, and we really love and appreciate you being there, and I know the children enjoy seeing you there.
Oh, thank you.
So we got such great, great, you know, comments and excitement from everybody at the school, so thank you for doing that, taking time out of your day. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Votche for the superintendent's recommendations.
Okay, before we go on to superintendent's recommendations, on behalf of the school board, I just want to mention that all of the school board members, and Ms. Votche, had the opportunity to attend the Louisiana School Boards Association's annual meeting, and we had in-service for continuing education. And we also had the opportunity to meet with Governor Edwards, newly-elected Governor Edwards, and many legislators, and senators, and Secretary of State Non-Gasser. And of course, our goals were to let the governor and the legislators know that we need to protect education, kindergarten through 12th grade. And of course, with all the looming budget cuts that will be proposed, we asserted and asked desperately and pleased not to affect our students. So hopefully, we were told by the governor that he is hoping to leave us whole in the MFP, that's one of his goals, and hopefully, he will go, come through with that. And as a part of the Louisiana School Boards Association's legislative platform, we, some of the goals that we stated, and we sent to all the legislators, and also to the governor, that K-12 public education is the best investment in the state that the state can make for the future of Louisiana. Two, local school systems realize the fiscal crisis that exists in Louisiana, but also understand the need to provide a quality education to every student who appears at the door of our local public schools. Three, local school systems are working to raise graduation rates, meet higher standards of learning, and working to ensure college and career readiness for all students. Four, the normal cost of the retirement systems for local school system employees are sustainable, are necessary, and are less expensive than paying into the social security for them. The unfunded accrued liability, or UAL, is a problem, but the state has made strides toward meeting that state obligation, so we need to let those changes take full effect before we can even consider disrupting the entire system. And then lastly, we ask them to please work to solve the structural budget problems that exist in Louisiana during this special session, so that Louisiana can move forward. And we ask them to please keep K-12 whole, and to think of our students first. Okay, anyone else want to add anything? I think it was a very, very productive meeting for all the school board members, and superintendents in the state of Louisiana. Dr. Kraft? Oh, and congratulations also to Dr. Kraft, who was elected president-elect of the Louisiana School Boards Association. We're very proud of you guys.
We're certainly privileged and honored to be able to serve in that capacity, and though, after this next year of serving as president-elect, then I'll become the president of the Louisiana School Boards Association, and I look forward to that challenge, and of course, I'll need the...
And of course, I'll need the full support of this board, and I have been able to receive that support over the years, so we thank you very much. And of course, there's many challenges and concerns relative to public education. And of course, one of those that we look at is the retirement system. In other words, if we would just stop paying pensions, we'd have to go under the social security system. If they would accept our retirees, and of course, that would be up in there, and it would be up to the federal government to do this. So, but what would still have to be paid is that unfunded accrued liability. In other words, if you put nothing else in there except keep up with that, that would be a tremendous, tremendous strain on state funds. And of course, it's just like the amortization of a mortgage, and that's supposed to be paid out in, by 2029 at the rate it's going. And it seems like the amount will probably be paid by 2008, maybe 2007, if it's made on a consistent basis the way it is now. So, there is a plan, but as some state officials, they want to bankrupt that and start over. And of course, if you go bankrupt, you'd still have the unfunded accrued liability to pay. You'd just stop paying into the system, and of course, that would create another situation that the state does not want to do. So, we just need to stay apprised of that. Mr. Campbell, you're a recipient of that. And of course, I'm in the retirement system myself, and many, many people that worked within the school system in St. Bernard are in that. And of course, we have many more that will be affected by the pension. Back in, what's, 1936, the choices were available to the state legislators, and I'm the first to recognize the sins of past legislators, caused a lot of that UAL that has occurred. The state could have said, well, we'll go under the social security system fully, or they could have had a combination of social security and a pension that would have made the state employees whole, or they could have just gone simply with the pension plan, which they chose. So, a combination of the two are separate would be what's involved. So, the main thing that we have to be concerned is for the legislature to do no harm to K through 12, and to keep it whole. And that's the intention of the Louisiana School Board Association as they go forward. And we certainly are pleased with the support of the school boards around the state. And of course, I think we have a great school board, because we definitely, definitely are moving forward, because this board is apprised of many things. And with Superintendent Vochet on the B.C. Board, she can educate a lot of those people that are not educated and had the same experiences she goes back several years. And we appreciate her leadership in what she's done, not only locally, but statewide. Everwhere I go, they commend our superintendent. So, we're certainly pleased, pleased to have her on board, and we want to keep her as many years as she wants to stay. So, thank you, Ms. Vochet.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to add? Okay, next item on the superintendent's recommendations. Ms. Vochet? Just a few reminders. I know we're gonna meet next week, but it's worth saying at this point as well, if you've passed down Paris Road, you're seeing the site for the new Merrill Elementary School. It looks really good, being cleared, and the ground being prepared, because on March 1st, we'll be opening the bids for the construction portion of that. And then, that will be brought to the board probably at a special meeting right before the committee meeting on the 8th. So, we're excited to get that started, because we're really pushing for the completion date of August of 2017 to open the new Merrill Elementary School. Also, a reminder that on Friday, March 4th, at Schellman High School Stadium, we will again have our parish-wide Special Olympics, which will be held from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00, and it's just a wonderful event, and it's open to the public. So, if you want to see some great athletes in our Special Olympics, please come by and visit with us that Friday morning on March 4th. On March 5th, Parish-wide, the Relay for Life at Valreis Park will take place, and we, as a school system, always put a booth up and are there all day long, and each one of our schools will be participating with us. And our school board secretary, Michelle Bebenek, really spearheads this event for us each year and does a good job. So, you'll see a lot of our, you know, school board personnel out there on Saturday, March 5th, at Valreis, participating in Relay for Life. So, we ask everybody to come out and visit a while and contribute to a really good cause. The Relay for Life starts at 2:00 until 10:00 that night, and we constantly have people from our team, you know, walking around the track. And what we do, each one of our schools has a specific time to be in charge of what I like to call the spirit stick, because that's what we used to call it at our high school, you know, walking around representing our school system in this event. So, be a good day. Thank you, Ms. Vochet. Okay. Is there a motion?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Before we adjourn...
There's a motion...
Before we adjourn...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Warner.
I just wanted to circle back to Mr. Nakoshian.
Okay.
You know, I mean, the six years I've served on his board, I've never heard any, anything, anybody have any bad things to say about the guy. He was just such a really nice guy, easygoing, just a class act. And I just wanted to convey that to the public and offer, again, my condolences to him and his family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. I know, Mr. Warner, it's very difficult for all of us to even speak of it and keep our composure at this point. I think what Ms. Isart said represented all of our feelings.
Absolutely.
You know, at the beginning, at the beginning of this meeting. And, you know, Ron came on this board, I think, in 1995, and I was in the central office at the time, in a different capacity. And he's nothing but a perfect gentleman, always with the students at heart. He was fierce in his convictions and what he thought was the right thing to do, and always fought very, very hard for our children. And like Ms. Isart referred to, he's very hands-on, visited schools all the time. Everybody knew, you know, all the kids, all the kids knew him. So, he's gonna be sorely missed, but he's left a wonderful legacy with us. And his wife Judy has been at his side, contributing not only to our schools, but in our community as well. So, it's going to be a very difficult time, I think, for all of us to get through. And as Mrs. Isart said, our heartfelt prayers and thanks go out to his family, and all the lives that he's touched here in our school system.
He was just a class act. He really was a class act.
Dr. Craft?
I'm sorry?
Now, announce when the services are. I believe there's Saturday.
Let me say, my wife has talked with Judy, and as of right now, there's no, none...
Nothing.
Set up right now.
Okay.
But that's what we heard, I heard, you know, just before I left.
It's Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00.
Oh, it is.
Yes, 9:00.
We talked with Judy earlier. Thank you, Cole.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. England. Okay, anyone else before we adjourn? Okay, Mr. Campbell?
I now move to adjourn.
There's a motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by...
Wait, wait, wait. What about this spelling bee?
Rotary spelling bee. Thursday, February 18th, Schellman High Cafeteria. Our very own Catherine Lemoine will be the enunciator. Barry Lemoine will be the emcee of the event. St. Bernard Parish Rotary Club, 15th Annual, 20th Annual Spelling Bee. I don't even know what year.
I think it's 15.
All proceeds go toward our literacy program, which provides dictionaries to third graders in St. Bernard Parish.
And the dictionaries are in, and they'll be distributed probably within two weeks. If, we'll make sure that doesn't conflict with any testing that'll be going on.
Free admission, plenty of refreshments. Come on by, enjoy.
And we do need volunteer spellers for the event.
Mr. England and Mr. Egan said they'd be there. They're happy to be there.
And we'll be studying up on chat.
We'll get them on.
We'll be the first ones there, the first ones out.
Well, no, we're gonna get you a runner there that'll be the chair, and you'll make like you're writing down the spelling, and then they'll spell it.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as, for you. So, it's none threatening whatsoever. It's a three-member team.
While we're talking about literacy week, this week is literacy week at La Crosse Elementary. So, if you get an opportunity, I know they have many board members already signed up, and many other elected officials and members of the community. So, that's all this week at La Crosse Elementary. Okay, anyone else? Okay, Mr. Campbell?
I move for the third time.
He moves to adjourn, and Ms. Aceveda seconded. All in favor of the motion to adjourn signify by saying aye. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, and good night.